For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is weird. Not having Eric here.
Okay, so we are going to start the meeting on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, and video/audio recordings are being made. Access to this meeting, the code is two-three-four-three-four-zero-six-four-four-six-seven, and the password is Tuesday. This meeting of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcasts, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally once you are identified to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera. Comments and statements are limited to three minutes. I'll do the equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. So first item up on the agenda is approval of the warrant. There was somebody who had a question, who wrote in about what warrant we vote on or what the warrant is. So I just wanted to explain that the warrant that we're referring to for this evening is a warrant that we approve the bills that we have to approve. So I just wanted to make that clear for someone who may not understand what those warrants are.
The bills we have to pay.
And the bills we have to pay, yeah, I think I said that, but anyway. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm in favor, so it's five-zero-zero. I also forgot to mention that Eric is actually, Dr. Conti is actually remote. He is at a meeting in Texas, and he is at the AASA meeting. So Eric, hopefully, you want to say hi so we can hear you? I can't see you right now, but...
He shut his camera off.
There he is.
Hi, Madam Chair and the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to represent Massachusetts at the Board of the National Student Association. I apologize that it conflicted with a school committee meeting, so... But I appreciate your support in my being here.
Well, thank you for attending. Okay, the next item is approval of the meeting minutes from one-twenty-four-twenty-three. And did everyone have, we all got clarification on the last second change, it was just a word change. Could I have a motion for that?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm in favor, so that's five-zero-zero. All right. Next is public participation. And just a reminder that comments are limited to three minutes. And again, anyone who is remote, please identify yourself and please turn your camera on. It looks like there isn't anyone remote, and there's nobody in the audience, so I think we'll move on.
May I ask a procedural question? Because of the way we have this, I can't tell who's participating remotely. I can only see people whose pictures are up or perhaps their name. Is there some way we could get like a list of who's participating? Because I can see there's like nine, eight or nine...
People watching, right, yeah.
Eight or nine people who are on this call, and I don't know who they are. Right, people who join the WebEx. Is there some way we could? I don't know, you want to...
You need binoculars so you can...
Yeah, really. Well, I can see B. Cat and Elizabeth Mello, but can you see the other ones? Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. Maybe, Eric, I don't know, Bob, could you just email it to us and I could see it on my own? Just a list of who's on, I know it changes.
Take a screenshot.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that.
All right, so the next item up is information and reports, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, we'll start with the student report, so Matthew, I see you from afar, so... So we'll start with a quiz. Matt, if I'm in the central time zone, what time is it here?
Six oh seven PM. I think, I hope.
No, you're correct.
A plus, that's what I'm striving for. Yeah, I think I should. So the only update I have from like a student council is the class of two thousand twenty-four this Thursday is having a fundraiser at Flatbread Pizza, and they really had success with it last year, so they're just doing it again. As of like more community updates, two weeks ago on the second of February, we, the administration, had a career fair for the BHS juniors and seniors. It was actually really good. I met a lot of different options and a lot of different people, a lot of different Burlington alums, actually, who are now in the workforce, and they came back and like taught us about their jobs. The drama club and the drama department put on the play, which was a funny thing that happened. They had a showing Saturday, and they're going to the festival and competing, I think, this weekend or the next. And honestly, everybody's just excited for February break next week, and everybody's winding down, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt, and I think Ms. Monaco has a comment, her question.
I just wanted to say the play was awesome.
I really enjoyed it, too.
All right, Dr. Conti? The next item up is subcommittee reports.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if we have any subcommittee reports this evening. We have other agenda items where we'll be discussing some subcommittee topics, but again, I... I don't have a subcommittee report at, you know, at this time. I'm not sure if there have been any subcommittees that school committee members have participated in.
Mr. Foss would like to make an announcement or comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last night at Select Board, it was decided by Select Board that the townwide DEI subcommittee that was formed by them about a year ago, well, actually more about a year and a half ago, isn't going to be renewed at this time, so it's unclear what's, what next steps the town of Burlington will take. I know that the efforts of the, of the school district are ongoing and will continue in a variety of different ways, but I just want to let everyone know that as far as representation from, from me for the townwide DEI subcommittee, it's, it may be reformed in the future, but at this point, they made a decision to kind of take a step back and reevaluate and go in a slightly different direction, and so I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foss. Any other, yes, Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I didn't have any subcommittee means, but I would like to request for a future meeting that we perhaps could get, because it's not on tonight's, is an update on the field study. We, one of our warrant articles last year was to hire a firm, which I know has done an evaluation of all the town and school fields, and I've started getting questions about it. So if, if it's possible to have that reported back at our next meeting, or at least let us know if it's still not ready, is it likely that? I understand that there was a draft already that came out, so I'm hoping it would be ready by the next meeting, so...
If it makes sense and we have new information, we can certainly add it.
I think, Dr. Conti, just...
Correct.
Madam Chair, we have several reports that are just wrapping up, so I think the field study is one of them to this time at this point. We've seen a draft. Bob, I believe you're reviewing that draft with the athletic department and the parking rec, is that correct?
Correct.
And then we also have the beam review that we received, too, and that'll be on the agenda, on our future agenda, so we'll be getting some reports and having some public discussions on, I think, both of those reports coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Next item is...
One thing that I wanted to bring up is that there was a townwide bus issue last week, and I got a lot of commentary on the, you know, good old, just general feedback on the bus company. I don't think, I think there was a specific issue here. But I know Ms. Monaco had mentioned earlier that there used to be a bus subcommittee, or I don't know if we can reconvene either a bus subcommittee of this group or get together with the bus company, but I would love to be a little bit more proactive this year and start thinking about the fall schedules, maybe run some simulations. If we change X, Y, Z, does that help with some of the routes? Do we need to add a bus? If that solves all our problem, then we can talk about that. But I would love to not, also not get the routes like the morning that school starts, things like that. So I'm just hoping that maybe if there's some brief window in like May or June that we have some time that we can revisit, we can take a look at what the fall busing is going to look like. Because I think we have one more year on this contract and also need to be thinking about an RFP for the following year.
Thank you, Ms. Simon, Ms. Monaco?
Yes, we did a, Kristin was on the committee with me, and we usually do that in the summer, but we can work with Bobby to put something together, I would think.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Next item is Ways and Means, and I can't see if Steve Moran is on or not. He is? Steve?
Oh, the camera's off, sorry. How's that?
Maybe they were expecting their members.
The Ways and Means met with the school...
Committee last week regarding Witsen's, and I think that's on the agenda for tonight, so I don't have any further updates on that. There's no, there hasn't been any Ways and Means activity yet with respect to the budget, but that should be starting in the next couple of weeks, so I don't have any further updates there either.
Thank you. So next...
Item is other announcements, and I actually have a couple of things that I wanted to state if I could. The first one is, I know the Select Board had mentioned something about naming the street out front here Dottie Way, and I just wanted to, you know, bring that up at this meeting. I know that we, as a school committee, should probably approve that when it comes in front of us or we can discuss it, but I am totally on board with that, and like I said, we can discuss it at a future meeting. The next thing I wanted to bring up is that there's a CPAC, CPAC is hosting an event on March seventh at seven PM, and I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that you must register to attend. There are a few ways that you can get information on it. You can search CPAC on Facebook, and there's a link that will take you to another place, which you can actually get the link. Also, please expect an email blast from the Director of Special Education, which will send you a QR code to register. Or if you have questions, you can also email BurlingtonCPAC.com with any questions. And Dr. Conti, it looks like you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was going to stress some of that. I also have some student announcements, if that's appropriate at this time.
Before we move on, what is the topic of the meeting? Oh, did I not say that? I thought I did, okay, yes. So the topic of the meeting is the Basic Rights Presentation.
For Burlington Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Yep, sorry about that. And a lot I wanted to say, thanks for asking. And Dr. Conti, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Chair, I just got a notification from John Middleton Cox that we have some students who made the, were accepted into the All-State course. So Julia Baldazar as an alto, Henry Estes as a tenor, Steven Noonan as a bass, Sienna Silva, a soprano, and Emerson Weisner as a soprano as well. So I wanted to congratulate the students and make sure I thank their teacher, Julie Weller, for, I'm sure, all the hard work that both the students and, and their, and their choral instructor put in. So congratulate those five students for making the All-State course. We also had a mock trial team win, and this list is, is a lot longer, so I'll just try to be, I'll try to be brief, but want to congratulate them. They are, they're three and O as a, as a mock trial team, and they'll be facing off in the regional tiebreaker coming up. So it, this is a tremendous amount of work, and the students put in a whole lot of time, so I just want to make sure I, I recognize them and share a point there, their teacher as well. So the attorneys are Mike Waddila, he's the captain, Liad Abdirizak, Jonas Asaias, Vivian Pendy, Henush Naik, Priya Patel, Breton Chu, Tessie Schultz, Xavier Locke, Kanasha Agral, Anthony Saliba, and Stephanie Choi. Those are the attorneys. The witnesses are Lea Ahmed, who's an assistant captain, Lisha Pedu, who's an assistant captain, Arushi Daima, Evan Johnson, Nathaniel Chow, and then the backup was Ismaheh Yusuf. So again, that's our mock trial team, and they are, they're just doing an incredible job.
Thank you, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Dr. Conti, and actually, I just wanted to...
Martha's question, that it's a basic rights meeting for CPAC, and it's evaluation and eligibility. I just wanted to add that to it. Any other questions, comments, or any other announcements? Okay. So we will move on to the next item, which is learning, equity, and thriving, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we are joined by Witsen's Food Service Management Company.
And they have a short presentation. As Mr. Moran mentioned, they also did come out last week and met with the Ways and Means Subcommittee, and so this is going to be, they've been in all the schools, they've introduced themselves to staff, but I think this is their first public presentation in front of the school committee in the community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Witsen's. I do want to make sure that I recognize there's a lot of detail work that goes into this type of procurement, and Nicole's put in a tremendous amount of time, just making sure all the details get covered, so thank you, Nicole. So with that, I'm not sure who's here from Witsen's, because I can't see, given the direction that I'm facing. So I'm sorry for my incomplete introduction.
Thank you for that, my name is Christine Catterton.
Hold on one second, can you make sure the mic is on green and then pull the mic a little, as close as you can to both of you, so that people in the audience can hear? And thank you for coming, I know we had kind of wished we'd had the presentation before the selection, but again, we're glad you're here tonight, so thank you.
We're happy to be here and appreciate the, the time and consideration and are looking forward to the, the partnership. My name is Christine Catterton, I work in business development. I'm here with my coworker, John.
John Gresbeck, CEO VP of the, of the Division of the Area.
We did put together a brief PowerPoint, so if we could move one slide forward. Actually, I can just use yours. So we just wanted to give kind of a very high-level overview and then a quick debrief of some of the things that we're looking forward to implementing once we get started. So Witsen's is a family-owned company. We are based on Long Island, and we are a minority business enterprise. We are the fourth-largest K-12 food service provider in the United States, and we are ranked sixteen out of the top fifty food service providers. One of the things that we're super proud of is the fact that we still have our flagship accounts in Connecticut, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, and Rhode Island, meaning the first account that we got in each of those states, we still have retained to this day. And it's, you know, of interesting note that we are the only food service company in the market as of present that can, that can do both contract management, which is what we will be doing here, as well as prepared meals. Hopefully, we don't need prepared meals, that's generally what we would leverage during an emergency situation, but hopefully it provides some peace of mind, knowing that that's an option in the unlikely event that we should need it. We could advance one, great. So our philosophy is pretty simple, and in fact, we call it simply rooted. And there's two guiding principles that are core to everything that we do. It's people, and it's, and it's food. So as I mentioned, we are a family-owned business, and we treat everyone that works with us as family. Granted, in this situation, the team members, the employees, will remain district employees. Their schedules and pay rates and everything else that they came, you know, that they came to us with will remain intact. But nonetheless, they will be treated as if they are family, because they are. I mean, the reality is that they interact with our students more so than anyone else on a day-to-day basis. And then the second piece of that is just simple food. So we, what differentiates us is our products, our, our food. We believe in very clean, very simple, very authentic food, and I think that will come through in the menus that we, that we put out for the students. So you are in good company. This is a list of the clients, the districts that we work with in Massachusetts. Some of them are neighboring, in fact.
Lexington, Winchester, Wellesley, Newton are all surrounded districts that are similar in size and scope. Some are a little larger.
Yeah, and the nice thing is that they are resources for us. And in fact, when we opened the first week, well, March sixth, some of their team members, some of our management team and our district managers will actually be on site here just to help support the opening, so that we can ensure everything goes smoothly. So a priority for us is increasing student participation. So what does that mean? We want every student to have access to a very wholesome nutritious meal, and we want them to want to buy those meals or want to consume those meals. At present, we have about a fifty percent participation rate, which means that half of the students are, at present, are eating school lunch. And as you can see, these are other accounts in the Massachusetts area that we currently partner with, and their average participation rates, which, you know, hover in the upper seventies and eighties. And for us, an increased participation rate means increased satisfaction with the program, and that will provide us with additional resources to put back into the program for the future. So how are we going to do it? This, I won't read this whole list, I know we are on borrowed time, but some of the things that kind of differentiate us from some of the other folks in the market are the products that we buy. For example, we use only all-natural salad dressings. We only use organic Stonyfield yogurt. We only use boar's head meats in our deli sandwiches. You know, we don't do anything that has any trans fats, we don't use anything that has high fructose corn syrup. You know, our meatballs, for example, have no fillers and no soy extenders. You know, all of our seafood is, nothing that we serve is on the Monterey Bay watch list. We purchase over fifty-one percent of our product locally, and we do, all of our eggs, whether they're liquid or shell, are cage-free. So those are some of the things that we feel as though are differentiators and that your students will see in the program. And in fact, one of the things I do want to highlight is, as part of our program, we provide unlimited fresh fruit and vegetables, meaning that if a student comes through and buys the meal of the day, whatever that may be, if they want to come back and have seconds on fruits and vegetables, there's no additional charge to them for that. So it's really, you know, it's, it's an effort to make sure that they are consuming as much healthy product as, as possible. And with, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit more about operations.
So with that said, a lot of times, we don't have the local connection within the area, but our local vendor is Cisco, we use them nationally in all of our programs. They deal with the local farmers, they protect, it's called gap certified, they make sure they're certified to sell, border health-wise, and that to Cisco, and we get that product from them. So you may have a farm that's close by that we're not actually buying direct from there, but it goes through Cisco and through the certification and to us. So we do deal with, there's a couple of farms out there that we deal with. We also deal with a lot of local farmers when it comes to apple orchards and things like that. On the elementary level, we'll do some promos with them, we'll bring them different types of apples. They get to see the display apples, they get to try them, and then they get to pick which one they like the best. So we get, we have a system that they could vote, they put a sticker on, on, on poster boards and things like that, so we get them involved in the program, we want their feedback. Next one is a, just a sample menu, some of the icons you see on there, the, the green and that, they'll represent either local, organic, and things of that nature. So just to give you an idea, this is a sample breakfast menu that down the road, as we transition the team and the menus into different offerings, currently, you're just doing a grab-and-go breakfast option, but we like to down the road offer something a little bit different for the kids, maybe one hot option with those cold items as well. But just to give you an idea what our menu looks like online, and you can see the structure of the, the icons there. Not to be repetitive, but Christine brought up the simply rooted scenarios.
One second. Could you talk about the interactive, interactivity with the menu?
Sure.
With parents about allergies? Because when you did that presentation, I think that's important for parents to hear.
Yes. Yes, I'll touch upon that. So the, we have a platform that we had built for us from a IT company. The platform includes our revenue, our purchasing, our menus, and things of that nature. What that allows us to do is that anything that's vetted through our purchasing department or nutrition department is only allowable items that our GM, our person on site, can purchase. They can't purchase outside that system. What that allows us to do is that means that, once the profile's built on our product, all the chloric intake for those items and all the allergens for those items are posted by each item. The parents get to go online on menu, as you saw the previous slide. They'll be able to click on a certain day. Once they go to that day, they'll be able to pick the items that either they want their child to eat or that child had eaten within that month. So it could be weeks ahead, it could be day ahead or day behind, whatever it may be. Once they do that, they'll build their own menu. So it's, it's interactive to a very nice extent. Once they build their own menu, they could go in, they could see the chloric intake for each of the items separately. They'll be lined up, they'll see the weighted average of all those items together, and to the far right-hand side, they see the allergens. So you'll know there's nine allergens now, they just added sesame seeds, so we have that included in our, in our program as well. So all the recipes get updated every time something new is added or substitute. We have allowable substitutes because of supply chain issues right now. Those are vetted out also in, in that program. So if they have any other questions, they could contact their GM on site. They have full access to all our products. They have the authority to pass on any information they need to. If they need nutritional support, we have an RD that's locally, matter of fact, Newton. Our RD in Newton supports our, our circle here. She would be able to assist a parent with any of those questions as well.
Thank you.
And that platform really makes it easy for parents and students to figure out, you know, what is, if I have a gluten allergy, for example, then I simply click the gluten icon, and anything that contains gluten on that menu on that particular day is grayed out. So I can sit down with my, my student and say, these are the things that are safe for you to eat when you go into the cafeteria.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You'll see that menu you have up there right now, and what Christine's telling us, there'll be a line through the items that, that have any of the allergens that you may cross that. You could also build a profile that Christine's mentioning. If you create an account and put your name in, you say that all the time, it'll always show up with the lines through it. You want to go in every time and say, you know, I have a soy or sesame or anything like that, so. So simply rooted, now, again, not to beat up, I think I just want to add about the marketing piece of that. So we want to make sure it's an educational piece on different levels. There are age-appropriate posters and signage and wording on the line and messages that the kids can learn from, as well as, you know, move on and make them healthy choices that, that their mom and dad may have pointed out to them. The signage upgrades you'll see throughout all the schools for opening. We'll have somewhat of a soft opening when it comes to the food piece, only because we need to train our staff. We want to make sure that we're very safe and know that they're, we understand their, their needs, they're willing to learn. It's a great staff, we, you know, the times we went around to the district, we had orientation. So they all seem pretty flexible in making some change, and that's what we're looking forward to do. So the middle school, the next two slides are about the, we call them secondary schools, which is high school and middle school. They're very similar when we talk about our marketing strategy behind them. When we did tour the district, we, we know that there were certain concepts that we could, you know, offer. The concepts, you should have an idea, those are things that, you know, you would see in a food court or a mall effect. There's a La Cucina station that offers different varieties of pizza, calzones... There's a La Cucina station that offers different varieties of pizza, calzones, strambolis and things of that nature. World Market will offer a variety of different traditional home style international meals. We have Great American Sandwich Company that will offer the deli boar's head sandwich with the toppings that the kids like. And depending on the school and the line and the availability on space, especially when we open up, they can be made to order. Other ones may be grab and go. And that would be a fall underneath our Freight Express, which is a variety of different salads each day that they could take as an entree and/or a grab and go sandwich. A lot of kids like to be on the move. A lot of kids don't really have a lunch period at, you know, sometimes. And they gotta go right to the next class so they'll grab a sandwich and they'll go, depending on the teacher allows them to eat within the classroom. So both the high school and middle school are going to have a concept driven menu, some different menu items and things of that nature. So we do have additional to that, a flavors program, a visiting chef program, a pop-up stations, which are anything that's relevant to today's market out in the field outside of, you know, in the retail business. So you'll see some promotional days come up and all those promotions are driven through the GM. They work with our local chef that's going to be onsite. And we also have support staff that comes in as far as executive chefs that do promotions. If they're really busy and tied down, like during training and that, we'll let a couple weeks combined, we'll have a visiting chef come and do a promo for the kids. They're done at all different levels. The elementary is more of a tasting program rather than a visiting chef day. But soon as kids see a chef come onsite, they're excited because they knew, you know, they know it's something new and different. And we'll be doing a lot of sampling with them when we do those visiting chef days as well. Just to give you an idea, there's a lot of information here. So this is broken down by high school, middle school and elementary. Just, just gives you an idea of the variety that we're going to be offering within the schools. And again, you may not see all those items day one, but that's our goal. Our goal is to get to that. And you'll be pretty amazed what the team can do and what we can offer on, on some small lines. But it just gives you a quick oversight. It's in the RFP as well. But we just wanted to show you that there's going to be available daily items. There's going to be a specialty item on each of the stations that we offer, plus some staple items that they get all the time. If you could zoom in on that, Bob, that would be great. So this just gives you a breakdown of the concepts that we, that I kind of mentioned earlier. And not to, I could be up here for days talking about the thousands of recipes that we have, the number of offerings that we have. We proposed a menu based on what we saw when we went around to schools. What's great about that menu, and I brought it before, is that the concepts can change at the drop of a dime. The menu can change within a day. The GM has access to all that. We're basing on the likes and dislikes of the students, but based on what we saw when we walked around, what we can offer, these are the concepts that we're talking about. So Great American, just quickly, a variety of different cold cuts, cold toppings, condiments can be made daily, can be made right in front of them, or can be a grab and go. World Market I went into is our traditional ethnic cuisines, all different types of menu items from around the world. And staple items like mom and dad would make at home. Meatloaf, turkey dinners and things of that nature. We have the Ruby's Grill or Coyote Grill is a mix tech station. It can range from, I'll give you an example, 80/20 lean beef. It'll be from a raw stage. It'll have cilantro, red and green peppers, onions, and that's all cooked within it. So you're not just getting the product that you currently get that's already pre-made, which is okay. It's not bad. But we want a fresh product. So over time, the schools will get to, you know, be able to use that recipe and have some nice fresh items. That comes again with a variety of different toppings. It could be nachos, tacos, quesadillas, all made onsite at, at that time of service. Espresso agent, that goes back to a world market again. Veggie tables, a variety of different vegetables that we offer. We try and meet the, the standards that we have to meet each week with the state ed department.
And this, I think, is a really cool station because we're starting to do a lot more with plant-based menu items. In fact, we have a partnership where we are test piloting some of the vegetarian and vegan based menus that have been endorsed by the Humane Society. So it's been really well received. There's certainly an appetite these days for more of a plant-based menu. And those are some of the items that we would showcase on, excuse me, on a station like this.
Right. And that also shows on the menu, you'll see a little icon that says Meatless Mondays. So we've partnered with the Humane Society. Just a short story, they came to us and gave us, I believe it was 12 recipes, said, try them. And then they signed on with us, said, look, we want you to offer that every week. So we do offer that every week. We've opened and expanded those vegetables with a variety of different other recipes as well. So the kids, that's a big item with the, the kids now. It's, it's actually one of the biggest ones that we've done as of late. So, and again, not to get into every single concept because I could be here all night. So we offer a variety of different chicken patties and burgers daily, plus a specialty item on that station. La Cucina is our Italian pizza station. They'll get a cheese topped pizza. They'll get a meat topped pizza and veggie topped pizza daily. They'll get specials on there too. Could be a salad pizza, it could be a stramboli, it could be a calzone. We do pizza pops that are made in muffin tin. It's stuffed with light partskin with relish cheese and a meatball and/or chicken. And it's baked in that and it's crusted over and it's egg wash. It's, it's amazing stuff. It's, it's a lot of fun. But one thing we're going to do that's probably.
I'm telling you, you're bringing us samples.
Yeah, well, we could do that. We didn't have the time today, but we could certainly do that. We, I think down the road, once we get our feet in the ground, we love to do a presentation with food. Before you come in to your board meeting, we could set up outside and not, not interrupt. One thing that we're going to add, not to interrupt, is which we're kind of excited about, smoothie bars. So we talk about a variety of different smoothies for the kids. That can be taken as a lunch with different items that will complete a meal. So it's a reimbursable meal. It's not just an à la carte item. We're looking to expand that eventually down into the elementary schools also to give them a different breakfast choice. Because again, the grabbing goes are good right now, but we want to expand that program down the road. So smoothies, I think will be a big thing. It's not a huge seller, but for those kids that want something different, we want to offer it. So when you look at the variety of items that we're offering, again, it's on the likes and dislikes of the kids because we have so many different recipes and items we can offer. I think that's it for me. If you have any questions, I could talk forever. Sorry.
Thank you very much for the detailed presentation. And anyone here on the committee have any questions or comments?
They're, they're doing a launch on March 6th. Did I hear it? Okay.
That's, that's the plan.
Target? Okay. In all the schools?
Yeah, so we're, actually, we're just waiting for the contract. The contract's done. Our, our opening start date is March 6th. Again, it'll be somewhat of a soft opening because a lot of, we have to be caring of the team members.
Yep.
You know, transition, change. We want to ease them into it. We want to make sure it's right for the kids. So yeah, you'll see different menu items that day. And you'll see the marketing that day and all that. But as we move along, you'll see more and more added as we, as we go.
Okay. Now comes Shadow again. Ms. Simon?
I also heard from someone that it will take, I don't know what, 21 days or something before you can completely change all the menus because there has to be time for something? Is that accurate?
No.
Or that the menus have to? Can you explain that?
When the RFP comes out, we propose a menu.
Okay.
Typically, well, it's, you're supposed to file the first 21 days of that menu.
Okay.
Once you file the first 21 days, we know the likes and dislikes of children, then we can make a change.
Okay.
But the first 21 days are, are part of the.
Are set. Okay.
Yeah.
So there might not be a huge change in the first three weeks, but you're going to be moving in as you just said.
Oh, yeah. I think you'll see changes from day one, but you'll, you'll see more added as we go along. Yes.
Ms. Monaco?
One question. You mentioned all the, excuse me, the stations, the various stations at the middle and high school. How do the kids know which lunch is reimbursable?
They're all reimbursable.
So they don't have to pay for it?
They're all reimbursable.
Okay, so are there?
That's our drive. Our drive is to promote meals. We want kids to get a full, complete meal. So each station offers a full, complete meal. So if they, let's say they went and they got the world market that day.
Yeah.
But they want an extra slice of pizza, the slice of pizza will be à la carte, but they'll get the reimbursable meal.
Okay. And where do they find the prices for the à la carte menu items?
We'll have a price list. They'll be posted throughout the survey area.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I understand there's already been an orientation for the current staff members?
Yes, we had team member orientation last, last week. Majority of the group showed up. Bob was there to support them as well. And I think we answered a lot of their unknowns based on our agenda because we've done that so many times. But there'll still be some, you know, some unknowns that they're not aware of as far as, you know, the cooking in the kitchen and the setting up on the line may be different. The way we market food will be different. And they'll learn as they go along. We'll support them. That's, that's, I think, the biggest thing.
All right, thank you. Dr. Conti or anyone else have any questions or comments? All right.
Just thought of one.
Ms. Massardo?
I know we previously talked about some of the sustainability of the physical products, like the trays and the plates and everything. And I know we went to two different elementary schools and one had styrofoam trays and one had like paper cardboard trays. I know is that, that's on your purview going forward?
Yeah, we purchased all the food, the trays will be paper trays.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, cardboard.
Yep.
Yeah, and then we could talk about future things as far as green team and things of that. We have experience in other districts.
Awesome.
Lexington being the big one and Wellesley being the second. But we have experience at that as well.
All right, thank you. Are we ready to move to the next item? All right. So the next item is the rising cost for, thank you very much. That was wonderful. Yes, thank you. Yep. Thanks for your time and for traveling. Anyway, next item is the rising cost for special education. Dr. Conti?
Again, Madam Chair, this is, it's really a two-part conversation, this particular one. Ms. Simon wanted to discuss specifically, I believe, a joint meeting with another community. Trying to look at Ms. Simon through the computer and I'm trying to see if that's, that's correct. Hi. So this, this conversation is really about a joint meeting that, that we'd like to, like to set up. I think there are some rising costs of special education programs. I think number one of those that I believe you've already heard about is the, the state, state-driven and state mandated 14% increase in tuitions for the out of district placements. So again, that's not a Burlington driven increase, that's a state driven increase. What we are planning on doing with the committee ahead of this meeting, and I'll certainly let Ms. Simon speak to this meeting in particular, is for the 28th, for our next scheduled meeting, I'd like to start with an executive session to have a very specific presentation to committee members. Would like to invite Mr. Moran from Ways and Means so that we can go over some of our changing demographics and changing needs of, of students. The reason it would be an executive session initially is because we have some very specific scenarios that I would like to review with the committee. And I don't want to have any concerns about anonymity. We can certainly build in components of this presentation as we go through the rest of the budget presentation. So this particular agenda item, I believe, Ms. Simon was mostly focused on the requests to have a joint meeting. And I don't want to misspeak on that situation.
Ms. Simon? I don't really have anything to add.
That, I just think it's really important that we, there's, there's a lot of costs in special ed. And we need to be aware of how we are trying to make sure we are meeting the needs of all of our students, whether they're able to be, their needs are able to be met in the district or if we need to send them to other districts and how that all works. And it impacts the town budget as well as our district budget. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Monaco?
Madam Chair, I might have been misunderstood, so I apologize. I thought there was a particular meeting scheduled. You will all get, again, when I'm back in town, we will have on the 28th, a very specific presentation on looking at our student mental health needs, our students with disabilities, their needs, and our students who are learning English, our English learner student needs in the, the changes in the percentages of all of those populations in, specifically to Burlington and specifically, again, with some individual cases. So that'll be how we start the next school committee meeting as part of our look at what we need moving forward. But I will say that all districts are experiencing these rising costs. And I just think it's important that we talk about them as specifically as possible.
Thank you.
Monaco had a comment or a question?
Yes. I know that the, excuse me, the special ed parent group, CPAC, was somewhat concerned about seeing this item on the agenda. And having experienced with that group for so long, I want to assure everyone that this is not, like, there was always a fear that the school budget would be blamed, the special ed costs would be blamed on rising school budget, et cetera. There's, there's none of that. Every program that we have, whether it's in the school budget or the accommodated account, every program that we have is, is worthy. We're totally dedicated to every program. The selectmen and town meeting are totally committed to paying for the needs of all of our children. And I don't want anyone to have the wrong impression. I see Elizabeth in the audience. Do you have anything you'd like to add? No. But you're here because of that, that item. Yes. So let there be no concern. We, we understand that special needs costs are what they are and we're going to pay them. Thank you.
Okay.
Again, Madam Chair, if I gave that impression, I certainly apologize. There are, there are components of the special education expenses, again, that are outside of Burlington's control. We are just trying to communicate that as specifically as we can to both Ways and Means and the school committee. Because if our overall enrollment is staying relatively steady, we, that, we still may have student needs that are changing. And as I said, that the, the state is increasing the tuitions for out of district placements by 14% for, for the next fiscal year. So that is something that is going to impact our accommodated budget. And we just want to talk about that in, in detail with the committee coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. And I just wanted to.
Did take the meeting out of order by one subject because I saw Elizabeth in the audience and didn't want to keep her. So if we're done with that, we can move on to the next item, which is going back to the superintendent's operating budget overview. And Elizabeth, thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, this is going to be, again, a very brief overview. What we are really trying to do is set up the budget calendar beginning on February 28th, which will be the, the Tuesday after, after break. We do have a guideline that we're constructing the budget around, which is a 3.75% increase over, over last, over last year. So you'll see that in. All the budget requests have gone out to all the different cost centers, principals and other folks. We've received all of those back. I think, as is typical, we, we have many more requests for positions than we will be able to fill. we, we have many more requests for positions than we will be able to fill. But we have all of those. Also importantly to me, and a requirement of the district, is that you all approved a three-year district improvement plan, planning for success is the term the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses in the fall. What you'll be seeing in the coming weeks are similar three-year plans that are created at the preschool, elementary, middle, and high school levels. Again, the principals, especially the elementary principals, all work together. You'll be seeing a common elementary plan across all four schools. And the plans were shared with both the staff at all the levels and the school councils at all the levels. So try to get input from as many different folks as we possibly can. And then the plans are all going to be in a similar format and aligned. So the process coming forward is when we're presenting, for instance, the preschool operating budget request, preschool will also be presenting their three-year improvement plan to the committee. And so you'll see not only what their areas of focus will be, but then the budgetary requests that go towards supporting those. So we're really going to be asking you to do a couple of things moving forward. And we've been doing this for two or three cycles now in terms of the three-year cycles that we're on. I think we're going to try to get back to something a little bit more typical after, after COVID. So it feels like we're reintroducing stuff that we've always, that we've always done. So those presentations will be coming. Please expect the binders for the 28th meeting or ahead of the 28th meeting. So you will have the, the budget books put together for the 28th. And again, we'll be building around the foundation of the 3.75% guideline conversation that, that we, that we had. And again, that, that's really the overview I have for you all right now. Again, expect, please expect more detail and coming in for the, for the end of the month. And we're still on track for the budget calendar with, using the 28th as the, as the kickoff for all of the detail.
Thank you, Dr. Conti and Ms. Simon.
In anticipation for hearing the budget requests, I just want to, what's the right word? Remind us all, I, I think that we're all, I am certainly looking to see DEI positions throughout the district. We've had conversations about central office, about building-based. I have heard, I know that this year we have an instructional coach with a DEI focus at the middle school, and I hear she, it's doing, going really well. I think that I've heard there's going to perhaps be a request at the high school. I would like to see a request for the elementary level. These are positions that may or may not be coming from the people coming to present. But this is what I'm hoping to see. I think we need to provide support for our teachers, because they're the ones present, you know, in the, in the classrooms every day with their students, in that we need to support our students, and we need to be providing this throughout the district. And I, budgets are values, and this is where I'd like to see us put our values as I see the budget unfold. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Any other comments or questions? All right. So we can move on to the next item, which is BPS District Library Programs Policy, second reading.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You all read the first reading at the last meeting. It was really a consolidation of three separate policies that we all combined and modernized into, and updated, sorry, into, into the one policy. So I would recommend the school committee approve the BPS District Library Program Policy for the second reading.
Do you have a motion, Madam?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Simon?
At the last meeting, at the first reading, I suggested that we title this the Policy of the Burlington Public Schools Library Programs, and I think that's what you just read, Eric. But the document that I received didn't include that, so I just wanted to be sure that the policy included, stated. And unless it's just going to be put into a different format, but I think we should say it's the Policy of the Burlington Public Schools Library Programs.
That's not what it says.
So should I make an amendment, or is that the way other people have it, that you have it, Dr. Conti?
We can certainly add Burlington Public Schools there. It'll be in the Burlington Public Schools Policy Manual, but we can add that to the top of the policy as well. Ms. Simon and Marion, if you could just make a note of that.
Sorry, I see it got added under our vision. So that's, if it's in there, it's okay. I didn't see it got added in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, we just had some discussion. Any other discussion? All right. So we, we're good with the way we've stated it? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so it's 5-0-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Program of Studies vote, which is next. Again, I just wanted to make sure we included it on a public agenda. I had omitted it from the prior agenda. You've already proved it, but I just wanted to make sure that we went back and did it in public session in case there are any other issues that, that someone had with the, with the Program of Studies. So I don't even think I need a vote. I just wanted to make sure that it was on the agenda in case anyone had any, any questions or anyone from the public wanted to comment.
Okay. Ms. Masardo?
Eric, I think I caught just now, I didn't catch it earlier, like a duplicate paragraph on the AP courses on page 16 and 17. And also, one paragraph says that the AP exam is required, and one says it is highly encouraged. So I think we wanted to keep the highly encouraged. So I think we just didn't take out the old one.
Can you, Ms. Masardo, that was page 16 and 17?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I will check that. Thank you.
Yep.
And again, it, we don't need to take a vote. I know it says on the agenda that we do, but you're saying that we don't, correct?
Madam Chair, you voted last time. It's on the agenda because of my error. So again, I apologize. I just, I needed a vote last time, and it wasn't on the agenda. So again, if anyone needed to say something, I just wanted to make sure we, we had a, a public meeting with, with the second reading on the agenda.
Good. Any other comments, questions, changes? Okay. So the next item is Letter to the MSBA for ARPA pandemic funds from the state.
Again, I'd like to defer to the committee. We, we made some edits to the letter. Ms. Simon, you, you helped with that, so thank you. And again, I can't see Marion on the screen, but I'm hoping that there's a version of the letter that you all can support and that we will make sure gets mailed out to Representative Gordon and Senator Friedman.
Okay. And it looks like we need to take action on this. Is that correct?
I think if it represents the committee- The committee, you should all make sure that you are comfortable. This was really put together at request of the committee. So if you all say you're ready for us to send it out on your behalf, I will happily do so.
So you want to take a vote on that? Have a motion? Okay.
I'd like to move that we send this advocacy letter to our state legislators regarding Massachusetts School Building Authority funding.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a quick grammatical question. Is there a reason that Senator Friedman's just in parentheses?
I thought it would be retyped for each of them.
Oh, okay.
There would be two separate letters.
Okay.
I just did that so you all would know we're sending it to both people. They'd be under separate headings.
Okay.
So we would send the same letter to both offices.
Okay, that makes sense.
Clarified?
Yep.
All right, good.
Thank you. Thank you for your work and for, Martha, for editing. Appreciate you guys putting it together.
Yep. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so 5-0-0. Next item is MASC Policy Work Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to give the committee an update. I received a call from Dorothy Presser, who said she is ready for the next steps in the policy work for Burlington. So Ms. Presser and I are scheduled, are in the process of scheduling a meeting where we can sit down. She is going to summarize the review that MASC has gone through. She will provide me a list of policies that she believes are needed. And then she'll also provide, I'm sure, some additions or updates to existing policies. And we'll talk about breaking that into manageable pieces, and then we'll start scheduling those pieces to come before the, the committee. Again, our goal by the end of this year is to have a, an updated policy manual that will, is an searchable electronic form that's hosted on the MASC website that is for Burlington specifically. And then as you all make changes and updates in future years, MASC would make those changes and update the policy manual so that we always have an updated version. But I just wanted to, I think the committee had asked for regular updates. I did speak to, again, Ms. Presser, and she's ready to sort of move into phase two, which is where we're starting to identify some of the areas where you all are going to need to take some action.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Looking forward to it.
Yep. All right. So next items are Facilities Finance. Dr. Conti?
I'm going to happily turn it over to Nicole, because I, I don't, not necessarily liking the computer interaction here. So Nicole, this is the financial update for the, for the month.
Yes. So this, this month looks a little bit different. If you noticed, we've added another section with, like, discussion of a capital plan and all of that. I thought that it would be useful to the committee to sort of see where we're at with existing capital projects that are open. So we've added page one and two, which are all of our open capital projects. It shows you what was appropriated originally, the, the year that it was voted by town meeting, how much we've spent and encumbered in the remaining balance, and the percentage completed for each project. And again, just thought that this would be helpful. If this isn't something you guys want to see every month, let me know. But I figured you'd welcome the additional information.
No, I like it. Yeah.
So that's on the first two pages. And then our typical revolving, operating, and accommodated updates are on the following pages. All of our revolving accounts are in good standing at this time, and there are no concerns on either operating or accommodated right now.
Thank you. And I do like the new format. I think everyone agrees with that. So thank you for changing it. Any other comments, questions?
So I, so now that you've given us this visual and information, it's, it's, I haven't had a chance to look at everything, and I know there's a number of items that we've discussed that haven't been spent, and those were intentional. But I am particularly concerned about the May, the 2020 funding for water bubbler replacements that has only been, you know, looks like a quarter of it's been done. And I'm just wondering what's holding that up, if you could give us an update on that, or if, in the future, if you don't know right now.
Through the chair. So that's a second request that we asked for water bubblers and filters. So you'll see that there's one higher up on the list, the first one, water filtration, which had already gone through. So we've actually put a number of bubblers in place. And we actually just recently purchased close to $10,000 worth of filters for another cycle of replacement for all of the filtered water bubblers. So you'll see that will start to come down relatively quickly. But again, it was actually to help us jumpstart a second phase of that project.
Thank you, Mr. Kurna.
If I could ask a follow-up. So it was sometime around then that we were installing new water bubblers that had refill water, I forget what they call it, refilling stations. So I thought that was going to be a significant part of that capital budget, not just filters. And the May 2017 water filtration, I thought that was because of some problems we were having in the, with the water system, that we were filtering the water system. So can you, maybe you can give a broad explanation. I can talk to you offline about some of the details. But like, between those two, how many refillable water stations did, did we actually install in the district?
Through the chair. I don't have the number in front of me. I could pull up the report. But the first phase was actually installing more towards the gym and cafeteria areas of schools, water bubbler fillers. Then the pandemic hit, and the request was to look at the existing water bubblers, which were shut down during the pandemic, because we didn't want to cross-contaminate by using the water bubblers. Also during the pandemic, which is kind of why you're seeing some of that request, is that bubblers and a lot of vendors had a supply chain issue getting us those products. Since then, we have replaced almost every single push-button style bubbler in the district to a standard, what we're calling standard now, dual bubbler slash bottle fill that is filtered.
All right.
So the request included us adding more than what, just replacing the existing ones. That's why you're seeing it as two different phases. But then also the filters to replace, because again, we changed the cycle and how often we were replacing those. As they took on more, we were using them more. So yes, there is money sitting in that account, which we could obviously buy more filters with, or we could add additional bubblers.
So at this point, would you say, and I think, I remember, we talked about doing it at the cafeterias first, at the gyms and that kind of thing. So at this point, what would you say we have left in the district that are not dual, filling, with a filling station attached to it?
Really unused locations would be something like that. So deep in a unused locker room or deep in a storage room would not have been replaced. But any of the high-traffic areas have been replaced. I think what the request would be is that if there was already an existing station in place, then we would have looked to replace it. What we could do now is look to add bubblers or fill stations to places that don't currently have, if we see the high-traffic area.
Okay. So there's still some money in there, and although you think a bunch of it's going to get used for the, the replacement filters.
Correct.
And do you feel that, that money then would allow us to do some new fill stations in some areas? Or do you feel, it sounds like we're relatively well-spread out now?
So through the chair, a particular unit, that's a double unit cost between $3,200 and about $4,000 apiece, just to buy the unit. And then if you're talking additional plumbing labor, a little bit more money. So depending on if we were to exist, replace an existing one, you're looking at somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000. You can see that that money only gets spread a little bit. Now, if you were talking about running plumbing to a whole new unit, cutting a hole in the wall, and so forth, you'll see that we can buy less. So like I said, the focus was definitely to replace existing ones, getting them up to a new standard for us, and then getting onto a new replacement filter cycle. And now with whatever's left over, we can look at the filter replacement and/or the adding additional bubblers.
So through the chair, so you feel pretty confident that we have this, these filling stations throughout the buildings, so students who bring water bottles can fill their water bottles?
I have not been met with any immediate request or in the recent future to add more.
Okay.
So I feel confident based on what's there. But I would gladly review more requests to see about adding more bubblers.
Okay, thank you. Just, you know, it's something that I haven't thought about in a while. You may or may not have been thinking about it. And now that we've had this conversation, if you, you know, are aware of situations, I would hope that we could continue to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Monaco?
Nicole, what's the, the line item lease of surplus space? And what are the expenditures for, sorry, which, which page were you? It's the revolving account, right under school lunch, lease of surplus space. So that is our, our leasing of the Bay Path area to lab. Oh.
We had created a special fund for this four, four or five years ago. And those funds can be used for upkeep and, like, maintenance of the building.
So if there's an expenditure, it's for upkeep?
Yeah. I think that, I'll have to double-check, but I think that a portion of that also helped to fund our summer help of the cleaning of the buildings.
Oh, okay. Mr. Moran, I'm sorry I didn't call you before, Ms. Monaco. Do you have a question?
I do. Would it be possible for the, for the 28th meeting to get a list of the warrant, or the, to get a small write-up for each of the warrant articles that have 0% expended that's 2021 or before?
Ms. Kasha?
Oh, Bobby, I'll do it. Do you, what do you want, like, addressed in there, just why nothing's been spent to date?
Yeah, so for the accounts that have, like, 0% expended before 2021, could we get a reason and a plan for what's expected? Now, one of those documents would be-
Sure, we can put something together.
2021? 2021 and before. So if they were encumbered in May or 2021 or before. Like, for example, the 2022 stuff-
2022 stuff was allocated last year, so I can understand why some of them may not be going through. But I see some from 2018 or so that, or I thought I saw one from 2018, 2020 air conditioning. So anything that's 0%-
So anything that's 0%, if we could get a plan, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Any other, we good with that? All right, thank you. All right. So the next item is Fox Hill School Building Committee.
Madam Chair, just before I move on?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question or make a point about the revolving account that I just want to make sure that we are clear on, because I don't think I presented it clearly at the last public meeting?
Sure.
So the revolving account that has to do with the cafeteria, and because the COVID years are very different than prior years. So Nicole, again, I just want to make sure I'm correct. So in a more typical year, we're really not supposed to carry more than three months of payroll in that particular line from year to year, is that correct?
It's three months of average expenditures.
Three months of average expenditures. And so if we have over that, then that, those funds can only be used for the delivery of food service or in the cafeterias, is that correct?
Yes.
And so we may have to spend some money to bring it down. Is there any timeframe of that, given the reimbursements that have occurred, or is the state sort of being a little bit more flexible?
So some of the funds here are supply chain assistance funds.
Which we're awaiting additional guidance on when those funds need to be expended by. So we're sort of waiting for additional guidance on a portion of that. And then also, the state had sort of taken a position that they're not sort of coming after us for having a little bit more due to the fact that we have rising food costs and supply chain issues and everything else. But it's definitely something that we want to address so that we don't all of a sudden have like a ton of money that we have to end up spending. But I think that that's something that Whitsons will help us navigate and spend smartly.
So, Madam Chair, the two points that I really wanted to make is that's a highly volatile line, and it may seem like we have more money than we actually do. Depending on what the state decides. So that was the first point that I wanted to make. And the second point that I wanted to make is we really can't carry a huge balance in there, even if the huge balance is accurate. We're really going to need to bring it down and use Whitsons to do that. But we can only bring it down by spending it on cafeteria or food needs. We can't use that money for anything else. So I think those are the, well, maybe one more point, too, is that we had talked about the contract ensuring that there is a surplus at the end of each fiscal year. That surplus is on top of anything that is already existing in that revolving account. So those, I guess I wanted to make three points on that, but there's a lot of uncertainty with how the state is handling those funds right now.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Bringing those three points up. Anyone have any questions or need any additional clarification? Ms. Monaco?
I would suggest that we look around at our cafeterias and see if we need any equipment. Could, that would be, I mean, there's always a need, a freezer here or, you know, whatever, dishwashers.
Right, dishwashers.
Maybe some plates, silverware, but I'm no joking. But if there's some money we need to spend it, let's see what we need in the various in the various school cafeterias and kitchens.
Again, I think that's an excellent idea, and I think. Once we have a better idea of what that number is and how, where to account for it, I think then we can make sure that we, you know, are properly equipped. So I think that's certainly where we should look, Mrs. Monaco.
And I think we'll find some of those gaps, too, as we start to see what the new food is and how it's going to be prepared, you know.
Or kitchens and dishes.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Definitely need bigger kitchens.
Exactly, yeah, a lot bigger. Are any other questions or comments in regards to that? Okay. So we can move on to Fox Hill now. Anyone?
You can. So thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Ms. Massardo or Bob, I'll certainly defer to both of you. I think the Fox Hill meeting that, I think I spent the longest time at, was the meeting with Donna Dinesco and the designer. And we really spent a lot of time discussing the educational program and really focusing on the next couple of months on making sure that they have accurate information about the program that we all want delivered through Fox Hill so that they can create the space to maximize that program delivery. So again, Bob, I don't want to, I don't want to misrepresent that meeting, but it seems to me that was the focus.
I just wanted to say first, yeah, thank you for that comment, because that is the focus of the meeting, but also introducing Dinesco to us. So we did bring a designer on board after the MSBA board panel had approved that as well, so Dinesco is now our designer. And the second thing I just wanted to add is that we recently had a communications subcommittee update as well to talk about the new website that will be going up and its future release, you know, to the public and so forth. So again, hopefully I didn't steal your thunder, Ms. Massardo, but please.
Sure. Yeah, I think the most important thing is that we chose the designer. She came and presented. We're all very excited. We have a couple consultants already working that are going to start digging holes over February vacation at Fox Hill. And then we are full steam ahead with the educational plan, so we can start moving through the phases of the feasibility study. The website communication should be expected in the next week to the parents and the town at large, so we're very excited about that. The school building committees are also posted public meetings, so folks who normally watch this meeting are more than welcome to join the school building committee meetings.
The next one is on March 7th?
Is it? Yeah, the next one is March 7th. It'll be posted, and the website will go out before that. I think that's.
Thank you. Ms. Simon?
The website is live now, and it's posted through the district website, but we're going to publicize more.
Yeah, I went to look at it recently. It's pretty neat, yeah. Any other questions, comments on Fox Hill? All right. Next is BHS update. Dr. Conti or Mr. Kuna?
I don't really have anything new to add. Please know that I think in May, we'll be looking to address another warrant article that would hopefully help us with high school feasibility study. So we'll have those continue in conversations. I know that at a previous meeting, we had discussed setting up an SBC-style semblance in what we did for Fox Hill, which would be a school building committee for the high school, so that is also still on our mind, and we have the documents that we could discuss like now at a future meeting. But like I said, no other updates to bring forth.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. So we do have need to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district and chairs so declares ASME union contracts. Also for approval of executive minutes from 11023 and 12423. The school committee will only return to public session for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? And Ms. Massardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco? And I'm an aye, so we are going into executive session. Thank you.